Kind of, Paul? Miss Ian and...
Let's call this meeting Hazel Planning Commission to order. First item of business is a roll call.
Blood. Plummer.
Here.
Franken.
Here.
Azir.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Ackent.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Next item of business is a presentation approval of minutes from December 8, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
Motion second to approve as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extension? No special order of business under new business. We have a plat review for Equine Park addition.
Good evening. Before I use the plat review for the Equine Park addition of Cedric County just outside Hayesville's area of influence but falls under our subdivision regulations. The applicant, Noel Mary Harvey, and their agent, Logan Mills. And the property is located at 7,000 West 79th Street South and falls under our subdivision regulations. The property is approximately 20 acres, is unplatted, and needs to be platted to be to build on based on our subdivision regulations. Responses from the utility companies are in your packet before you. Staff is recommending approval of the plat provided that they adhere to the Cedric County Public Works policy regarding access controls. Logan Mills, the agent, is here to answer any questions for you, as is also the Cedric County representative is also here in case you have any questions.
Okay. Since I have a card from the applicant and the agent, which one of you wants to go first?
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Logan Mills. I'm a certified engineering design, 1935 West Maple in Wichita, Kansas. And we're representing the applicant. I guess I know Nicole Franken. I didn't realize you were on the Planning Commission here. But basically, I wanted to state that we're in agreement with staff comments except for two items which I'd like to discuss. If you want to take a look at our plat map, it's the final plat map. With regards to access control, and I'm not sure this is your guys' issue or not, this is a county requirement where they want to limit the access to these properties based off of an access management guideline handbook that they have. And so there at the south end or the bottom of the page is where 79th Street is located. This is a dirt road. And we're asking that lot, one and two, being that they're 10 acres in size roughly, both of them, have their own driveways, being such that they're such large lots. If you look at your staff report, I think Georgie did a good job of actually putting the reasons why we wanted the separate drives for both of these lots off of 79th. I've got those listed on the last page of that. So basically, again, the 10 acres being such a huge piece of property, it just doesn't seem right to not give them access. Just one drive off of 79th is all we're asking for each lot, for a total of two. The county wants them to share driveways, both accesses, or both properties to share a driveway. This creates a hardship mainly because of these items I've listed, but I guess I can go through these. There's separate ideas, both the property owners, the future property owners are here, but separate ideas of gating their access. They have horses on the property, so gate is important for that. And they don't want to have to have to shuffle back and forth between gates in one single drive. They want to be responsible for their own. This owner's already had to dedicate a lot of right-of-way out front for the county. They do that for future road expansion, future growth. And that's kind of just a for-free thing. You have to grant it as part of the plating process in order to get your building permit. They do not get paid for that. So it's kind of a double gut punch to take right-of-way from them and then not let you even abut your road, abut your property. So these guidelines, I think, are more for, you know, if we're dealing with like a Walmart entrance or a commercial drive entrance. Unfortunately, that access guideline policy that the county has doesn't really address residential drives versus commercial drives. So that, there's a big difference there in my opinion. And then, again, 79th is a dirt road. It's not a paved road. There's probably more squirrels and raccoons and deer crossing it than vehicles. And again, the county doesn't provide maintenance of the road. It's actually provided by the township. So for those reasons, that's why we're against that comment. I know Daniel's here. I'm sure he'll give you their reasons for why they want it. And then, secondly, the other thing that they're not as happy about either is the owner doesn't want it to require him to have to do an inspection on his existing system. Again, I don't know if that is your requirement here to make a decision on that. I know that's maybe more for the county commission. But we wanted to get your feedback and maybe your support for not allowing those, or not needing or not, you know, in support of us for not making us do that. So that's what we're here for. The applicants are here. They'd like to speak. So I'll let them come up if you guys want to.
I'm Alan Harvey. I'm the owner of the property. Y'all doing okay tonight? We're, we've been in that, in that location for, I think, 16 years. And we've always abided by any kind of rules or regulations. We have put some buildings, outbuildings up out there, and of course, we had to get permits for all that. We are, we are in a unusual spot, the way I've always looked at it. We get, we've got a Hayesville address. Our school system is, we're zoned in Clearwater. We get our electricity out of Cheneau. So we're, you know, we're in like a little neutral area as far as I'm concerned in that corner there. We're only doing this because, as y'all can tell, my wife and I are getting on up in years. And we're needing some help with the family to move in there and help us out around the place, honestly. I know, I never intend to sell in that place. I'm intending on spending my last breath there, so. We're just asking for any kind of guidance or to make this process a little bit easier than what it's become, I think. So that's all I got to say to you. Thank you.
You stand for a couple of questions? Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I do, but I need further clarification about the current driveway I'm looking at on satellite rather than the plat because it seems easier, is not close to where the property line is going to be, the right?
It's probably, what is it, Logan, 200 feet maybe?
Yeah, they're asking for, it's going to be roughly 150 feet. Those dimensions on that plat map, they're just trying to tell you how harsh space they would be, or what we're asking for.
And so on this plat, where are they proposing you put the driveway that you will share? On the, so he would have to move his existing driveway over to the property line?
So they want him to share that driveway, which means he would come across this other lot and come in and out of that.
So they're asking one property to give an easement to the other to allow, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Where are you wanting to put the other, the second drive?
My driveway is established. They're wanting them to use that driveway to come in around the back of my house to go over to their place, to share that place. And the driveways would be coming off of Ridge Road, I don't know how, is that an eighth, eighth of a mile? Maybe an eighth of a mile would come into their lot. It's right there, pretty much right there on the property line. And then my driveway is about another, I guess, eighth of a mile. And that's where we would come in and we would have separate drive.
Okay, I understand, but I'm not clear where the second, the new driveway is going.
About a quarter of a mile from Ridge Road in.
On 79th or on Ridge?
On 79th, yes.
Okay.
So, okay.
So I think he's talking somewhere about right.
You got somebody showing?
Which makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So to abide by the county access management policy, because of your frontage on 79th Street, you can only get one drive and meet their requirements, right?
That's what I understand, yes.
And you could take another drive off of Ridge Road?
Well...
For that second property, but is, that's...
In all due respects, sir, I think it's, you know, from what I understand, it's a safety concern or some, something somehow?
I agree with you because it's a two-lane paved road that's treated like a highway.
Exactly.
To meet their requirements, it is possible, or are you far enough north that you get into that floodplain? I can't tell from the dimensions on here whether it's...
We're out of the floodplain as far.
Right, but you have to be so far from that intersection before you can have your first drive. If that takes place on Ridge Road, you've got to be, what, 600 feet away? Daniel, do you know if that's in the floodplain or not?
It is. The dimension is 660 foot, county requirement. Don't know if that's in the floodplain or not.
For the first full access drive, which means you can turn either left or right out of it, you got to be 660 feet from the intersection.
So it looks to me like you could get almost, close to it.
At your existing driveway if you left where it was.
Where you can see it.
Yep.
So the dimension on the bottom of that is 62876. And if I remember the county code right, it's from the center of the pavement, not the edge. So that driveway comes pretty close to meet the current county policy, where it sits right now.
My driveway does?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
Your other option is to come off of Ridge Road 660 foot from that intersection and go north and come back down to wherever that property is going to be out of the floodplain. I don't know if you've got an idea where you want to put that house on that second property, but is...
Yes, sir. It's going to be just west of the existing house, right there at that tree line.
So that's a longer drive, but it is doable and within county requirements. Is that something you guys have considered?
The problem with that is there's, if you go out there, there's a pretty substantial ditch right next to that tree row.
Yeah, that you got to cross and you got to deal with.
Put a big culvert in there, you got to cross in there. And then, yes, as you said, a long drive because where that existing house is, they're just going to be on the other side of the tree row. So it's just a, our drive that we're proposing, and along with the existing one that's there, is just that north-south tree row right west of the house. If you were to take a line and go down straight and hit the road to 79th Street, that's where we're asking for it to be.
And the farther north you go, the more floodplain and the deeper it gets and the bigger blocks you have to have.
Correct, right.
And it gets more expensive almost exponentially by the foot.
Exactly.
So...
And we think it's a safe, it's a safer location also. And that's not our...
And I agree with you. Because of speed and everything else, traffic volume, all of it on Ridge Road is much higher than it would be on 79th Street. But to try and meet the requirements that are in place, those requirements govern what's done out here. And it's not, in my opinion, for us to say, we're going to waive these requirements because they're not our requirements. So remind me, Georgie, this process is, we make a recommendation.
Right.
Goes to council, and then it goes to the board of county commissioners?
For the dedications, yeah.
Okay. And the reason you're doing a full plat is because the property is big enough that you can't just do a simple lot split because it's too many acres, right?
Correct.
So you're effectively being forced into this.
Exactly.
And you mentioned the donation of all of that plated ground to right-of-way from 75 on the corner to 60-foot half-street farther in with the taper. What you didn't mention is that also includes both those tree rows that you would potentially lose that are, you really have no say over it. As soon as you donate the ground, if they want to come tear them out, they're gone.
The two, the two there just west of the house?
Well, no, those, those are on your property, but the tree row along the south line and 79th.
Right.
And your west line, the east line of Ridge, all of that will be in that potential donated right-of-way if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Yes, he will, if we were, if they were to expand the road out, he would lose those trees along, abutting both the main roads.
Yeah. Now, I don't know that Ridge Road is going to go to four or five lane anytime soon, but that's definitely something that's a possibility in the future. And should at least be pointed out if we're going to talk about all this.
Thank you.
Daniel, do you want to state or rebut or clarify?
No, I think, I think you have everything correct there.
You should probably introduce yourself and we don't have a record.
I'm Daniel Strant. I'm the engineering manager for Cedric County Public Works. The access management controls that we're asking for, that's universally applied across the county. It's not specific to this area. City of Wichita has similar access management. They're a little bit shorter in length. I don't remember exactly what that is. It's about 400 some foot between access drives, but access controls like that are important for safety concerns. There's more conflict points, and I understand that this is a gravel road that they're requesting the second drive on. And they're correct, there are probably more squirrels now, but we're not looking at the present, we're looking at the future and planning for what could eventually come around because it's going to be next to impossible to rearrange driveways in the future. So this is a planning tool. What's that?
Especially once they're plating.
Correct.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, City of Wichita is 200 for right-in, right-out and 400 for full access?
I don't know if it's 400 or 440 or something like that, but it's about that.
It's not your policy, so I don't know why you would know it, but I'm just...
Right.
It's probably shorter because speeds inside City of Wichita as a whole are roughly 40 miles an hour for every arterial street, and yours are primarily 55 at statutory on a two-lane paved highway.
Yep, whether we're talking about 79th or Ridge. So with the way this was set up on here, we were asking for a joint access. As it said in the comments, we're okay with an access off a ridge, but with the proximity of the two drives that they have on 79th, that's why the comment reads as requesting a joint access there.
Statutory speed limit on a dirt road is?
55.
55, not 45?
I thought it was 45 if it's not posted according...
It's 55.
Okay. Well, that's news to me.
Same.
All right, well...
Appreciate, appreciate the knowledge.
I got a question for you. Are you saying then that they can't put in this second drive on 79th?
I don't believe there was space for a separate drive, but we do often get joint access agreements. Oftentimes during the plating process throughout the county, they'll put them on the shared lot lines and then they'll split off from there. So it's not unusual.
Apply for a waiver to where they can put in this second drive like they want?
After the plating process is finalized, you could go and vacate the access controls. So that involves going to the Planning Commission and going through their approval process. There is an application that goes along with that. But once the access controls are in place on the plat, it's nothing that we will be able to allow when they come in with an application to install that drive. If it's not on the plat, we can't install it, so that needs to be vacated at that point if we're going to deviate from that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or general questions?
So when a resident in my township asks for a new culvert to be installed, generally speaking, we've never had one denied no matter how close it was to a main road. And that's on properties that aren't splitting. Is that...
So what type of road was this on?
A dirt road on a main road, like 95th, let's say. We just had, we just put one on 95th, and we have to ask the county for permission to give us a permit for our culvert, but we're not replotting. They're just doing it as an additional access to like a garage or something on their property. And it's usually pretty close to the main intersection. We've never had an issue. What's different about this?
So when those go through, we do review those permits that come in. Not everything comes in as a permit. Some things slip through the cracks, but when they do come in as an application, we check them for that spacing. If there is a property where it's physically not possible to fit one in with the spacing, we have to give someone access. So, yeah, if it's a, if it's a lot and it doesn't have much frontage, they're going to get an access. If they already have access to their house and they're asking for a separate access to a shed that's off to the side, and they don't have the spacing required, it'll be
Thank you. You have something else to add?
Can I just...
Sure.
One last thing. It's, it's Daniel's job to enforce the access management, and he does a good job. We've been back and forth on other plats. I did one south of Cheneau, okay? They wanted us to share those drives as well. We were able to get individual drives, but they had to be, you know, a certain feet of, or a little bit less than the 600 feet. I think we did 300 feet there away. So it isn't a requirement to require or make them share a driveway. I don't want that to be out there. It's not a requirement. These are guidelines that they do a good job of trying to follow the best they can. Respectfully, we're just asking in this case, I mean, it just makes the most sense to have their own driveways. These are huge pieces of property. Nobody wants, you guys probably don't share a driveway with your neighbor, unless you do, let me know about that. And you're probably on less of a lot in size here in town. But again, I don't know if this is your choice to make. We are going to the county commission meeting. We will be presenting the same information there, but we just kind of wanted your, your support. You guys have been elected or maybe not elected, but...
We were appointed.
Pointed, yeah.
To be in. So we just, yeah, we just want your support in this, if anything. I know you probably, like I said, can't make a decision on one way or another, but you do sign this plat as a, as the city of Hayesville.
You got a motion?
You know, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, pretty much what the staff is recommending, recommend approval if they adhere to Cedric County Public Works policy regarding access controls. I think the responsibility lies with Cedric County, not us, so that would be my motion.
Do you want to amend or anything to recommend that they review that our intent? That you're going to go there and argue the same thing you argued here, right?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's add that to the motion.
So maybe restate then what you're actually saying?
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to recommend approval, motion to approve. Help me out. But, you know, they've got to...
With the requirements to meet Cedric County access management policy, but to be reconsidered by the board of county commissioners at that meeting.
That's what I said.
I'll second that.
I have a motion as second to recommend approval with all of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.
So this will go to city council on February 13th. That's the next step in our process before it goes to that. So you guys will probably need to attend that meeting. That is 7 o'clock on February, Monday, February 13th.
And you guys don't give a... Can you give a recommendation?
So this will go to council with this recommendation. They will have the final say.
I swear when I took the test.
Then it goes to Cedric County Committee for the approvals, denials, dedications.
Yeah. It's not a very common thing, so.
13th, Monday, 7 p.m., right here.
I wonder if it was changed. I'll have to look up the history of that because it bugs me.
He'll explain it to you, sorry.
It is. I do it every day.
So moving on, we got under new business, I need master plan review calendar for 2023.
This is just for your reference for regarding what we are planning for the year.
So far, January looks crap.
What's the guideline?
Okay. Anybody have questions or want to move anything for any reason? Hearing none, moving on. I would see we have a public hearing of zoning code regulations. Respect the rights of all parties involved, and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy of, a copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. We now formally open the public hearing to consider the proposed revisions to the zoning regulations for the city of Hayesville. Staff, please present.
So I am not going to go over everything that I went over last time. We did go over those in the meeting, and then everyone had the redline version and everything. So I am going to go over the changes that I have made since I sent it out last time. In the packet that you have, if you can turn to, let's see, page 20, there is one definition that I missed that I want to change, and it's self-service storage. I want to change to commercial storage. One thing, when you do the search for where commercial storage or storage units are allowed, it never comes up, and I'm not sure what this term, but to me, it makes more sense to say commercial storage, which includes rentals of individual garage units. If everyone has a questions or is okay with that? With that, page 13, we're going to go back. There is storage garage, and it says, see self-service service storage. I want to remove that definition. Everybody have any questions on that? Okay. Back to page 20, the site vision triangle. Previously, we had looked at the boundary line of a property. This is after going over with the building inspector, this is going from road right-of-way. So basically, the same concept, kind of hitting in the same area, but it's going from road right-of-way, so that diagram shows 60. It does coincide in the landscape section, which I believe is page 138, 134, so I'm not going to cover that twice, but so that's just kind of updating it.
Road right-of-way, not road right-of-way.
Okay.
Hydinated?
Yep, I'll get that. Okay. And then when we go to look at the subdivision regulations later, we will update that to match this as well. Questions on that?
Isn't there a requirement that it's below three feet is fine? Everything above three feet is a triangle?
Say that again?
Any vegetation below three feet is allowable. Anything above three feet is a violation in the triangle.
Hold on. There's something in the landscaping part that says that. I believe you are right because we talked about that. So you're wanting to make sure that it's...
Yeah, I just don't want somebody to see here and... Yeah, I just don't want somebody to see here and not know to go to the landscaping section. It should be reflected or at least reference the landscape section that's got the correct requirements in it.
So the landscape section would match this? Is that what you're saying or?
Well, I'm saying if I get here and I got a definition for a site triangle, but it's only partial, I either need the full definition or to reference the landscaping section so I know what the full definition is.
Okay. I think we're going to come across that here, so. Okay. So from there, we're going to page 57. And this is on B, just manufacturing home subdivisions. This is just for any future parks going in. We had a issue with something in the last couple of years. The lot lines are not defined in the park that we have and there was a deck that was built over a property line. It was kind of an issue. So when one is put in, we definitely want those lot lines to be clearly defined somehow so that we know this trailer belongs here, this mobile home belongs here, so.
Okay.
And I did borrow this from another city, so apparently this is supposed to say Hayesville, not the city that it says, so that will be corrected. This is just dealing with accessory buildings, pools, underground piping or anything like that can't go out into an easement. And this is just clearly stating that if somebody builds something on an easement, it's not the city or the utility company's responsibility for having to take that out or a fence or anything like that if they put it over an easement. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. And this is going to go, there's going to be more references to this, but you'll see under other uses. There was a lot of references for public works director instead of the planning and zoning administrator. And I believe this stems from long ago, zoning used to be under public works and now it's moved over here. And those should be going through the planning and zoning administrator for the zoning code. So that reference is just changed throughout. Page 173 is the next one. And the only thing on this is just where I had added that change in the language for 20 days, I'm actually going to leave it the exact way it was. So basically the red line won't be added, we'll go with what was deleted. It'll be the same thing on page 178. And this is back to the site triangle that we were just talking about. Yeah, but this doesn't. Hold on.
Yeah, I have a little bit of issue with this. So no shrubbery can be taller than three feet?
That is, yeah, that's what was in there before.
Within a site triangle.
So just within a site triangle?
Yeah, but you strike, okay, so you got the dimensions for the site triangle on the previous page.
I'm referencing the dimensions for the site triangle under the definition instead of right there. And so that's just looking at the corner of those intersections.
Okay.
And I'll give you time to read through that to make sure it's how you want it.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
And I did not receive any comments back from the public on anything for this.
What they rely on us for. Okay, any other comments or questions?
No one?
No. Now's the time for any member of the public to speak. No questions of the public from the commission, I assume. Public hearing to revise the city's zoning regulations is now closed. Public comment is now closed for commission action and the floor is open to commissioners' comments. Are there any comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I closed it verbally, but.
We don't have to do that.
Okay, never mind.
A motion to recommend approval or denial of the zoning regulations?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, as presented, the zoning regulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second to approve with corrections talked about in the room.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
No old business, no correspondence, off agenda.
Just want to let everyone know, we don't have anything scheduled right at this moment for the first meeting in February. We're looking at the second meeting. I am looking at a training workshop for that. I'll let you guys know. That's, just want to give everybody a heads up.
What's the topic?
Just kind of going over the general items for variance and everything, flats, how stuff is handled, just kind of a general review that we've never kind of gotten to do. A lot of it, you guys have, well, actually we've seen a lot in the last year, more than we have, but just kind of going how, over how things are handled, public hearings, everything like that.
That would be good. I'm excited about that public hearing part.
I have off agenda. Salem Township just south of Hayesville has had the same road operator, operator, heavy equipment operator for, I think, 37 years and tomorrow he is retiring. We will be having a retirement ceremony from 10 o'clock until about noon. So that's at 200 West 95th Street, south of the township building. We will have some lunch and cake and.
What's his name?
Kirk Outterbury.
Thank you. Any committee updates there?
I don't know.
I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks, everybody.